Cindy's trying to get in.
They're fired.
That's okay, I'm good.
Still working wasn't that the one that was?
Oh.
I'm just kidding, you're like where?
Yeah.
Thank you David, do you want to pass that letter down since Cindy is not here?
Oh yeah.
So they are aware.
I hope you guys can come to this.
Oh, on Thursday, it's on my calendar.
It's a public thing, right? I don't want to give it away.
All right, we'll call the Grand Forks County Commission Meeting to order, today is May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. For the record, all commissioners are present or on Zoom. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we've got the, uh, everybody get the opportunity to read the minutes from the previous meeting, who have a motion to approve. To move by Commissioner Ingham, do I have a second, Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried. All right, approval of the Order of Agenda. Commissioner Hagan, did you have?
Yes, I was just making checking, but I wanted to add the proclamation for childcare providers, Dave.
Okay, and where would you like to do that?
Mr. Chairman, whoever the commission is, that is, stand and under committee report.
Okay.
Um.
Working, I think. All right, thank you, okay, so anybody else have anything for the Order of Agenda? We have a motion to approve the Order of Agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Okay, I'll let you have the second, Commissioner Hagan, Beech.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
Agree. Approval of the Consent Agenda, Bill's employee status changes over time, and the April financial report, if anybody wish to have anything. Hold. It's time, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Okay, Commissioner Peach takes the motion, Commissioner Ingham seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Okay, special events permit, the Beehive Bar Street Dance.
Mr. Chairman, whoever the commission, I think Jordan Adams is on Zoom for this topic.
Jordan, are you on?
Yes, you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, talk up, talk up a little bit if you would.
Yeah, so thank you guys for having me on, I apologize for not being in attendance, we are out planting right now, you can probably hear my tractor in the background. Special event permit, we are looking at doing another street dance at the Beehive Bar in Reynolds. Uh, the date is July twenty-ninth, and it would entail closing off Eagle Avenue, or County Road twenty-five that runs right through Reynolds. Uh, times of closure would be roughly three P M. to three A M. And this would allow for setup for the band, um, as well as teardown afterwards. Uh, we would use signage from the Trail County Highway Department, um, just like we did two years ago when we did it. Um, and that would involve setting up a little detour through towns to keep traffic moving. Um, I've also hired security guard from Red River Security out of Grand Forks to be on duty, uh, throughout the band. Um, few other things, I've also talked with the Trail County Commissioners, they met this morning, and we received approval from that. Um, as well as Sheriff Steve Hunt, um, of Trail County, he was in on that as well. And then lastly, the Reynolds City Council is also aware of the dance, and they are willing to give the go-ahead nod following approval from both the county commissioner groups.
I'd like to move approval. Okay, I was just gonna ask, okay, got a motion by, uh, or Rustad, second.
Sure.
Second, second by Commissioner Ingham, one question, uh, hey, did you guys get a chance to look at that permit at all?
Yes, we did, he, Jordan emailed the sheriff's office last week, we looked it over, I spoke with Sheriff Hunt, and we have no concerns.
Okay, okay. All right, um, all those in favor of the motion for the Beehive Bar Street Dance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jordan.
Uh, how about the Human Services Zone Director? Good evening. Antoine Kiggit for the record, Human Service Zone Director. Um, the Senate Bill twenty-twelve passed, and that is this Human Services, um, budget, as you know, we are paid out of that budget, all of our operating costs comes out of that budget. Since that bill has passed, it's also now implementing, um, implementation of zone raises to be put in effect of July first. And so I'm coming before the commission to get approval for implementation for that to take effect July first. Um, there would be no cost of accounting, of course, just the implementation of that to be put into effect July first for the zone team members. And then also to bring to your attention that also within Senate Bill twenty-twelve, there was also another clause in that bill to appoint another board member to the Human Service Zone, there has to be an active legislator. Um, so you guys will have to give me direction on how we want to do that, um, and we can come up with a game plan.
Okay, all right. Um, is that your portfolio?
It's Commissioner Peach.
Yeah, oh, Commissioner Peach is, okay, all right, Commissioner Peach, did you copy that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Rustad. All those in favor of the, uh, new law change, uh, for Human Service Zone signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure Commissioner Peach maybe could get ahold of you.
Yeah. I'll work with her.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Health Director.
Commissioner Ross, ten members of the commission, we come to you today to lay some foundational bricks for and ask for the Withdrawal Management Center. Um, today, this is purely informational as we look to traverse next year's budget process. I'll let Sierra Ballard, it does social advocacy, detox coordinator, provide some context for the workforce team does, and then I'll close with some details. Hello, and thank you Chairman Ross and members of the commission for the opportunity to speak with you all today regarding Withdrawal Management Center. I'll be speaking lightly, um, on two talking points today, I'll be speaking lightly, um, about my staff's workload. I'll also be speaking about the lift that the Withdrawal Management Center brings to the Grand Forks community as well as the surrounding area. I want to share a little of the workload and expectations of my detox advocates. Advocates are meeting the immediate needs as direct contact for clients seeking services for alcohol and drug withdrawal that does not require medical intervention. I want to mention that the Grand Forks Withdrawal Management Center is open twenty-four seven. For anyone unfamiliar, the center provides again non-medical observation and care for individuals withdrawing from alcohol and other drugs. These services are provided by detox advocates, who have required trainings they must complete annually, um, in addition to continuing education. They are CPR, first aid, and AED trained and certified, they have annual pieces of training completed, items towards infection control, suicide prevention, HIPAA compliance, mental for, mental health first aid trainings, and more. Detox advocates are expected to show up for the designated shifts ensuring to provide a calm, safe, and supportive environment for all clients. This work must be done, uh, to best serve our clientele in a face even of stressful times and, um, experiences. I want to share this to note that my team of detox advocates worked and helped step up during the global COVID nineteen pandemic and helped support clients at that time who needed quarantine and isolation. Um, this work was completed for individuals who were, um, without shelter at that time, managing homelessness. Um, my team members, detox advocates, are expected to show up and, and help, and they do that work. My team and I serve individuals who are commonly the sickest in our community. Um, working in the field of addiction, we all know is challenging, and as we know, there is no one-size-fits-all approach. Still, my team steps up and helps support the clients in all areas needed. We provide care and support and help get individuals and families connected to services firsthand. I'd like to make an opportunity to highlight the lift that the Grand Forks Withdrawal Management Center provides for the Grand Forks area and surrounding areas, so detox advocates again work and support clients in Grand Forks and Grand Forks County, in addition to other areas in the state of North Dakota. If you are not aware, we are one of two standing social detox facilities in the state of North Dakota. The other is located in Fargo, and it is connected to the Gladys Ray Shelter. We get referrals commonly from the Grand Forks Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, All True, North Carolina Rescue Mission, Grand Forks probation, and more in the Grand Forks area, as well as, um, calls for help from connecting communities. I mentioned this as I did take a call, um, for support this morning from Devil's Lake, and then did receive a call last week from Grafton, um, individuals looking for additional support. Um, and again, I share this to help note the wide, wide-reaching support that we do provide. Our team members, we are all specifically helping to reduce unnecessary hospitalizations, we are helping to increase the safety for individuals experiencing withdrawals. We are creating opportunities for treatment services, in addition to supporting our law enforcement with, um, a very helpful resource. I want to mention some numbers, um, in twenty twenty, we had a hundred and forty admissions. In twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and eighty-four admissions, and then in twenty twenty-two, this past year, we had two hundred and thirty-nine admissions. Lastly, I want to share that our great team of detox advocates does all this great work in helping to support our community at a starting pay of sixteen dollars an hour. I want to mention that both McDonald's and KFC have higher starting pays than what my detox advocates are currently receiving. Thank you for your time, and I'll pass it back to Tess.
Yeah, thanks, um, Sierra, and I, we do anticipate increasing, um, those admissions as we've opened up more, uh, space, given the nature of the, um, emergency response. Um, and we're able to kind of monitor that and increase our access, so part of my role as director includes the big picture and strategic planning. Um, and so it seems like we're kind of in the midst of a perfect storm, so we were supporting this program through cash carryover for the last couple of years. And we anticipate that to run out if it hasn't already, um, this year, and, um, as I shared with you, uh, previously, we have experienced, um, an increase in our expenses related to inflation. Um, so as I've shared with city leadership and my professional experience, I would have expected a facility and program like this to be further along in its, um, program development and financial stability. But as, um, you are aware, the pandemic severely limited that, uh, severely, severely limited leadership's attention to be able to, um, to build that and, um, dedicated time to those efforts. As, uh, Sierra mentioned, the workforce challenges related to staffing a twenty-four-seventh facility. Um, and to articulate this in one example, using our budget preparations, so we combined the, um, budget preparations for this next calendar year using two lenses, so we calculated it using our current staffing, which we're understaffed right now, and then a fully staffed team, and the difference, uh, in those two scenarios is ninety-seven thousand dollars. And, uh, through general operational principles, I attribute this difference to Ms. Ballard's, uh, continual flexibility to cover open shifts to ensure this facility stays open twenty-four seven. And so it would be our hope, uh, in an ideal world, to drastically reduce this metric to allow everyone to work at their highest scope, um, to ensure stability of the program. So upon gathering this, all of this information, I felt compelled to break down the action items into three buckets, so what do we need to do now? What do we need to do in the near future, and what do we need to do, um, for long, long range planning? Um, so what I'm doing now currently is, um, laying the, the groundwork, um, we've asked the city to step up and, um, increase wages in this fiscal year, so it hopes to, to start that July first. Um, as the city, both the city and county are doing salary studies, we want this group to be a, a part of that as well, and, and have an increase in that. That second bucket, the new plan involves all of you, um, as a reminder, there's four partners involved in this, the city, the county, the state, and then All True. Um, so as I continue to work with Sierra and hone in my numbers based off of what we can, um, agree to at the city level, um, I just want to prepare you, um, that the ask next year may be more significant than you're used to seeing. Um, kind of the current figures we're, we're showing is between, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollar or it's a fifty thousand dollar increase in the ask, um, based off of the goals. And so by having this conversation now, this, um, allows us to understand possibly what information, um, you may need to make an informed decision, um, as we traverse the budget process. Is there any data, any more background information you would need, as I know there's a lot of competing priorities, so that would be my current ask.
Thank you, any questions? Commissioner Ingham.
Can you tell us about the results of the program, how you measure success, and how things are working for you?
So, um, what we're looking to provide is probably like an infographic, um, at a later time, to be able to articulate what kind of the metrics that we monitor from year to year, would that be?
Well, just, I can see that your program will do a lot of good, but not everybody can get through that kind of program, will not be right back into it again shortly. How do you see that kind of thing happening, or are you, are you able to really help people stay away from the problem long, long term?
Mm-hmm, yes, and I would say that we definitely are, um, in understanding the role of addiction and substance disorder, we do understand that we're going to see repeat clients, we do understand that, you know, a first time through our, our process may not be best fitting for everyone, so we're going to work to continue to support those individuals until they do get that sense of connection, um, for choosing to pursue services. Um, now in regards to our ability to measure, I will, we'll ensure to get some information back to you in regards to data, um, in regards to our information, um, to the, the good work that we do do with our program.
Another metric is really our, our community partnerships that the, the law enforcement community, All True, uh, feel supported in, um, the videos patients don't qualify for, um, a medical admission to All True, but it's still, um, burdening the, uh, medical resources that we have in our community, um, as well as law enforcement, so we have, um, a person who may be displaced or, um, has broken some, uh, relationships in their support system that need a temporary place to go, and this is this place currently, um, so that's what success also looks like from, from that perspective as well.
Commissioner Peach, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
And I'm just here, I'm just gonna build a sheep barn, and then I just have some unwritten administrative rules, so I was looking for clarification on it.
Okay. Um, Wayne, did you have? Any comments?
Sure.
You know Wayne, right?
Yeah. Oh yeah, um, yeah, um, Mr. Buckman wants to put up a sheep barn, uh, his property on the township. I believe his issue is that, uh, we don't, there are two types of building permits, one's an egg permit, one's building, it's regular building permit. The threshold we use for determining what is an egg permit versus what is a regular building permit for an old building is that if you are exempt according to the state statute, um, uh, with, uh, with the state here, and the reason we use that is too bold, uh, because basically everybody was coming in and saying it was for egg, and, but more importantly, um, we need to have some way to track that for the tax equalization office. Because if you're not tax exempt, it adds valuation to your property, that needs to be incorporated in the taxes, so if we don't have a permit, which they review every year, there's no way for them to know what's going on out there without driving around, you know, every single row of all the time, so. Right.
Thank you, explain what section of your, of your rules we are dealing with?
Um, we do have, uh, in our, in our administration, as far as it just refers to an egg permit, or egg buildings are exempt. Um, the commission, uh, is a, as far as they give me a set of rules, then I have to, it's my job to come up with how to administer them. Um, so I have to come up with something that's fair, non-subjective, that's legally defensible in court. That's why we decided to go with, uh, farm exemption requirements, uh, but no, it is just an administrative policy within our department. Um, you know, between building permits, set of permits, zoning, I don't know, addressing, it would be virtually impossible for me to write down every administrative policy, how I issue permits and stuff like that. Um, a lot of them are, are different, but they still, you know, apply the same criteria, um, same thing as far as definitions go. It would be impossible to define every single term in the ordinance, you know, I'd have documents four feet thick. Um, there is a process, if somebody disagrees with our administrative policy, we do have an appeal process, which I told Mr. Buckman about. And, uh, he fills out an application, uh, right slayer planning commission, if it was planning commission, uh, then, uh, I do a staff report explaining the history and why we have ordinance, and we discuss it, and if there's a way we can tweak it, or they want to leave it the same, or if they want to get driven, tired, uh, you know, we, we can forward, but we do have a process.
So is that coming up before planning and zoning?
I do not have an application, but
Okay.
but he was informed that, that is a process.
So what, what is the dispute here, what difference does it make to the claimant, and, and what you are saying should be done?
He can get a permit for a sixty-by-eighty sheep barn on his property.
And that's a regular permit?
Right, yeah, that's just a regular permit, yes, no issue, you can walk in tomorrow and get one, yeah. Uh, they, they egg permits, they're, the, the egg permits don't require a fee, I believe that's probably the issue, but, but yeah, I'm, I'm not saying you can't get a permit.
So I didn't get an egg permit?
No, you can't get an egg permit, you have to go get a building permit.
Why is he, you know, for an egg permit?
He's not, he's not tax exempt.
Right, so that's his unwritten administrative rule.
He's, he's not tax exempt according to the state's, uh, tax code. If he's not tax exempt, we need to keep track of those buildings so that they can be added to the tax rules.
But egg building to me means egg building, and so I don't, I don't understand what, whether, whatever the state code is, I don't, I don't think you have it with you or whatever.
But it says here, a, there's a certain design, respect for house, or a, a grain of, products with livestock, and then you continue on. And it just tells you that when it's going to zone it.
Is there any circumstance under which an egg operation would be tax exempt? Otherwise, it doesn't seem to make sense, okay?
Uh, it would only be tax exempt if they meet the requirements that's a certain percentage of your income. Um, the way that I tell that is, uh, that they are not, uh, if you're tax exempt, you don't get taxed on your house or anything like that for property taxes, so I just look at the, uh, tax equalization, uh, property records to determine if they qualify for an egg permit or if they don't.
Doesn't seem like too many people would qualify for an egg permit for a building out there in the rural parts of Grand Forks County, do they?
Correct, no, no, they, they want, you know, and, but we still need to keep track of that for taxation purposes, because even if it's a sheep barn, it's still gonna add value to the property and still gonna have to be taxed.
I think that language needs to get cleaned up after the fact.
Yeah, and, and that's certainly something that we can discuss a planning commission, that if they want to clarify that definition or, or anything, but I mean, we gotta be careful where we draw the line, you know.
The other thing you have to realize is, if you want any people to start farming in Grand Forks County, most people starting farming aren't going to be state tax exempt in agriculture, because you have to make so much money. I mean, it's not, you would never start farming, be tax exempt. So, I mean, the way you have written laws, I mean, they're actually pretty clear and pretty straightforward, you know, and there's really nothing wrong with them. You just can't have unwritten rules that want to do, you know.
Well, I think what, what we probably need to do is, uh, bring that up to a planning and zoning meeting.
Come on.
And definition. Commissioner Rust and myself are on it, so, uh, then we'll deal with it at that time.
Sounds fair.
Okay.
Does he need to fill out the, the, uh, access, uh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'll be honest, I see his point more than I see our point as it sits right now.
Yeah, technically, you'd have to fill out an, uh, appeal application, and then, uh, he would be put on the next planning commission.
But what am I, appeal the exemption, like, don't need one, or what do I don't?
Right, right. You, you, you disagree with my interpretation of the ordinance, so you're appealing that.
You don't, you're not interpreting the ordinance, you're interpreting your own rule.
Well, you're, you're uh, appealing the administrative procedures of the planning zoning department.
So then I come back to the commission and then he would be, excuse me, planning and zoning.
After planning and zoning.
He would be the one to interpret.
And it would come to the full community.
Yeah, they'd have a recommendation.
And that's how we get change.
That seems like an incredible burden. I've been in. That's all this on the back end of the now developed sheep barn, because agricultural according to state. Statute. And whether it's agricultural, uh, in our. Administrative rules or not.
Well, no, this, you're, it's actually, it's your county ordinance, it's, there's, there's, it's agricultural, not state.
Yeah, the state is not agricultural.
He's just using the state tax exemption for his rule. I mean, you can use, like, I still file schedule at this farmer, so he asked me, am I a farmer? I said, by the, by who? By the, you know, by the. Tax of the United States, you know, yeah, I'm a farmer, because I file schedule there, there's probably, how many people in the room file schedule there? Anyone? No, so, I mean, you can't, like, the rule of being taxing about the state of North Dakota is so flawed. It used to be, you know, they just changed a few years ago, it used to be if you worked on it, if your wife worked on a house and made forty thousand. You weren't tax exempt, and that one was actually much better than now, because, I mean, it just. You know, farmers have million dollar houses in Grand Forks County, million dollar house, lake homes in Minnesota. And they don't pay taxes in North Dakota, but they have no job when the state lines are paying taxes on a lake home. You know, but they're tax exempt, but we will state.
I don't think I can decide which way I go on this until we see the rules you're talking about, Elaine. I think if it takes a while, but you need to bring us to planning and zoning. And then get us documentation so we can help you interpret or rule or agree with what we do. I can't do it in the vacuum myself.
Sure, sure, and for the meantime, I don't think we're, you know, I don't think we're holding him up, he could go in and get a permit tomorrow. It'd probably be for a hundred fifty bucks, but he'd still be able to move forward.
Move forward on his bill.
Yeah, yeah.
That okay with you?
Yeah, I mean, I can pay a hundred fifty dollars, but it's.
But we'll be working on it.
The resolution says there shouldn't be anything, but I mean, it's, it is.
So, but no, I will bring that to the planning commission.
Okay.
It'll be in June, because well, me.
So he has other unwritten rules too, as far as like. You have another rule, because I'm in an area where it's under forty acres, so I have to, it's called a productive acre. And according to that box resolution, again, it's clearly defined in here whether productive acres, this is an acre land which crop tilling. Or pasture can take place, but it's not included buildings, area, lands that susceptible to standing water. So. His unwritten rule on that one is anything in the flood plain. Is unsuitable for pasture. I have a creek that splits my land, and right now the creek is run down, it's about. Eighty-five feet wide and two, three feet. So if, I mean, I can consider that being unproductive acres, because it has standing water. And it doesn't year round, but it does now until the monoliths, other than it's usually run dry. But his rule on productive acre is anything. That's within the flood zone. Right?
Right.
Anything that's within the flood zone is an unproductive acre. Well, if you say that, there's many acres in Grand Forks County that are in Sanborough Residential One that are farmed, that would be. Considered unfarmable through the USDA or whatever. You're using is. Stuff being crop tilling, so you'd have to go tell those people that, you know, you can't farm that ground anymore. Because it's in the flood plain, and according to our resolution. You know, you can't pasture or farm. But he's not gonna be able to do that. No, and you have the whole county of Grand Forks in here.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about tilling or farming, we're just talking about pasture acres.
Okay, that's fine, but that's not what your rule says again, you have to read these, they mean something to people. I mean, it says right there what it is.
Right.
Where, so anyways, but, so he said, I have like, how many acres, six acres unpassable in my land. Well, I, I can see the acre, I mean, I'll give you an acre for what the world, where the water's standing right now. But the rest is not unpassable land, you can't use the flood plain as. Your unwritten rule for productive acre.
Reason I do that is we have to have something that's not subjective. I use the digital layer provided by FEMA. Um, we use that for two-fold reason, obviously, we don't want flooded pastures. Um, also, uh, most of our residential subdivisions are directly adjacent to Cooley's. Um, in fact, Mr. Buffett's property is directly adjacent to a thirty, thirty-five lots of residential subdivision that's been there twenty, thirty years. Um, so we try to limit the number of animal units in that acre, our area. Um, based on what I saw on his property, you would have eight acres of. Productive acres of, of his land that's on his parcel, which would allow him an acre. So, I mean, I don't think we're restricting him. To anything that, that's unreasonable.
Okay. Well, I think at this point, we'll take that out of planning and zoning.
Yeah, absolutely.
In the June meeting. But you can go ahead and get your permit for your. We'll deal with that with planning and zoning.
We got the side barn, how many animals?
No.
See, I talked to Wayne last summer, he told me, so I designed the barn for that.
Okay.
And then last week, I thought during the two weeks, they'll change the number on.
The animals getting out?
Um, once I did the drawing on the G I S, it was, uh, I came up with around eight acres. So that would be eighty, eighty sheep.
So last year was thirteen acres. So I don't know why somehow between last year and this year, I lost five acres of ground.
Well, uh, that was, and I, I can't say that I drew that out, it was just kind of a visual.
Okay.
If that was, that was my mistake, I should go on proud and I'll give them the exact number. But now that he's looking to get a permit, you know, we have to look at it more in depth.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, by any means, come and look at my land and you can see what, where the, you know, where the, according to your productive acre, the standing water. I mean, it's nowhere, you know, it's not, it's not the flood plain, I mean, do you know what the hundred, the definition of a hundred year flood plain is that he's using? It's flooded, it's one, one tenth of one percent in a hundred years or something?
I have a few in the last twenty, but.
Well, you gotta put in the same, because I mean, mine runs off in the first two weeks.
No, and if the planning commission couldn't come up with a standard, that's not subjective, you know, but. Standing water, susceptible standing water, I have no, we have no way what that is, you know, if there was a digital layer with a. Thirty-year flood plain or something like that, you know, but, I mean, that, that'd be up to the planning commission aside, but we need something that's not subjective.
Yeah, it sounds to me like it's already subjective, you know, because what the, what FEMA's got is clearly not what the actuality of the land use is. So FEMA's mind's eye is different from reality, so I don't know, that come up with something truly unsubjective. Like, well, we should have to come up with something reasonable.
Well, and standing waters were reasonable, I mean, I can see the pond dug in your yard that holds water, you should take that out. Or like my creek that has water right now for the last month, and it probably will have water all summer. I mean, I, um, you can't pasture that, I would, you know, I completely agree, but where the water came up in the spring. You know, yeah, it's, there's standing water there for a week, you're right, you know, and that's the flood plain.
Yeah.
You know, wish I'd get that, I'm not gonna put my sheep in standing water, you know.
And maybe we need to, maybe that's planning commission conversation, maybe we need to find another way to achieve what we're trying to achieve. You know, maybe we use something other than flood plain, and then we just limit the animal units within a certain distance of our residential subdivision.
And we have the state laws that already have all that.
Cause they, they don't have setbacks to residential subdivision.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, you know.
That's true.
Oh, yeah.
This isn't a lot, though, this is.
But it's the same, it's all the same, it's just a feedlot, you know, productive acres all the same.
Oh, this, this is under, don't get live, sorry, so that's.
Yeah, I think we can get this all straightened out, planning and zoning, so, right?
So then I fill out the permit, then I get it back, you guys determine I don't need a permit or what?
If you wish to be at the meeting, you can come to the meeting.
When is it?
Whenever he sets it up in June.
Oh.
Yep.
Oh.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. All right, county engineer.
Chairman Ross, members of the board, and uh. Two contracts for consideration today. Um, these would be, uh. I call them a grant you got from the D O T with federally money to uh, replace some bridges. Approved for these, uh, one on a year ago now. Um, finally getting things worked through. Um, they are for. See, the. Uh, B R P project just for the bridge on county five to South Ramville. That is uh, a hundred percent eligible structure up to one point two million. And we maxed that out, trapped opportunity out. We estimate the total project to be one point four million with a local share, we have to kick in four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, however, that's for total project, this one is just for the engineering permitting work. Um, for that, and then the other contract, the. B R J dash B R O project is for. Six different bridge projects throughout the county. They are just about a hundred percent paid for, we gotta kick in fourteen thousand on the two and a half million itself. But, and again, this is just for the engineering work to be done on that, uh, construction is planned for either twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. I believe this long said has reviewed them. It's okay with them. Um, these are standard uh, D O T federally contracts we would use for all our federally projects. I would ask for approval and multiple chairman and multiple auditor signatures.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion, Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Ruston? Any questions or anything for?
Just Mr. West, please on both.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Uh, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Period.
Thank you. Little tidbit, and well, one thing I, I should probably bounce off the board and get an opinion here. Um, uh, Swanson and I are still working on the details of the, you know, we shed off as our implement dealership. We work on purchase order, or, excuse me, purchase agreement and, and those details, they'll be coming in the next week or two, probably back to the board, hopefully is our schedule. Um, the other part is last meeting or two, I forget, my timeline getting mixed up here, but. We had um, discussed moving that money to the mannequin shed. Bullshit, I haven't put any specs or anything together, that it will have to be bid. My original intention with that shed was to rehabilitate what was there. However, after a little further research and detailed looking at it, I questioned if that would be the best use of our money. Shed was originally built in nineteen forty-nine. Um, we did repaint it seven, eight years ago, or seven years ago about. Um, so it looks a little better than I think it truly is, but um, there's some significant issues with it. Mainly particularly rust around the bottom perimeter. Um, and holes in it, there's ploncs, it's when they drive equipment in there, there's been times where the wing sticking out that's clipped it and caused some significant damage, but. Maybe could be passed repaired or not, what I'm really concerned with is, is if we put all that money into the shed. Maybe it's good for five or ten years, but, you know, for a kind of money, it really should be on for long-term investment, in my opinion. You know, what's it gonna look like thirty years from now, fifty years from now, I don't think that shed's gonna last another fifty years. I, and not that I usually get into this level of detail, or I haven't in the other sheds, but. Um, it was implied, and we had discussed rehabilitating that one, however, I'd kind of like to do a little change order. With that, and then just replace it, if I don't complete it. Um, I believe we still have enough money in our budget to do that. But. I'm not asking for any more money from anywhere else, and what was approved for capital improvement funds and what's already in our current budget, I think would cover it. But it is a change of scope, and I hate for that to go through and. All of a sudden, you know, somebody makes a comment, or you drive out there and there's a new shed, like, yeah, I thought we were rebuilding it, what was there, rehabbing it, you know. Just, just make expectations clear and get comments on the board if there's any other concerns with that concept or not, or if there's any other, any yes.
Right, well, being as that was the year I was born, I know I need to be rehabbed, so.
There you go, there you go.
So. When would that be, could you actually get that designed and brought to the board and built this?
I think so.
This season?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, it's really, it's a simple, super simple square building, it'd be the footprint proposed, the same size, forty by seventy.
Do you eat those building?
Yes, yeah, that's one of the main intentions of, of doing this.
Okay.
And. A lot of the money is in the concrete floor, so that's gonna be there regardless, it'd just be, um, you can studs and you can. But just a simple, simple building that's heated, we're after, so.
Great.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if I need a formal motion or not on that, but no money changing, but.
I don't really need a motion, so.
You had nod, you're right.
Yeah, okay. I'll go with the plan, okay. If I have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance attack.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. If you recall, you approved um, sale bonds for today's meeting for the courthouse loan. Uh, within the last two weeks, I found out. Um, we would be eligible to apply for a loan to the North Dakota at two percent interest. So it'd be far cheaper than I want, so I asked the chair if I could remove it from today's agenda and not sell the bonds. So instead, I have a loan advocate, application that I'd be sending off to the bank in North Dakota tomorrow if it's approved.
Okay.
So we would um, pay the cost and be reimbursed, so we don't get the five million dollars allowance, it's just as we need it, and it's two percent. So it's a much better deal.
Well done.
Yeah, so I would like a motion to approve the application.
I'll second that motion. You second that, Chris arrested, okay.
Thank you.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion is carried.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Director of Administration.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the first item, the construction manager at risk. Um, recommendation is Leon's gonna break the board on that, and quarterbacking that process.
Sir Ross, members of the commission, if you all remember, at the last commission meeting. You voted to allow the construction manager at risk committee to interview construction engineers for that bid, because they were always ahead of apply. So on May fourth, the selection committee met and received a presentation from. Uh, individuals from construction engineers, and then they asked questions, reviewed the bid. And so during that meeting is when they introduced the fee structure sheet, at this point, um, there's not a set cost for the project. Um, and that is simply because we do not have an architect yet, so construction manager at risk.
cost for the project, um, and that is simply because we do not have an architect yet, so construction manager at risk cannot set that cost, but there's the structure sheet, they acknowledge the budget that we are working within and the product constraints, and as you can see on the the sheet where we rated them, most people felt pretty comfortable with that presentation of cost across the board, there's an average score of eight and a half from all committee members, uh, recommending, uh, the construction engineers be selected for the C M A R. Mission for this project. In your minutes, you'll find responses to questions that were asked during the meeting or in your sheets, the minutes from that meeting. Everyone felt pretty comfortable with what was presented, uh, they've worked a lot, and they're always grand books county, they did actually a lot of the original work with Miller Dunby out of the cities to take a look at the stone when we first started this project, so they're familiar. And so with that, are there any questions on this? Some thoughts? The selection committee would be recommending, um, approval of selecting construction engineers.
Okay.
As construction manager at risk for this project.
All right, do I have a motion to that effect? So my commissioner, again, second. Commissioner Ruston. Any other comments? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, for the next agenda item on, uh, board conversation update and Youth Assessment Center update. In your packets and on your desk, you'll find some renderings, I'm gonna be referring to one a lot in this topic. Just, just so you're aware, um, uh, myself, Mr. Ruston, Chair Ross, we've had a few meetings with the Fair Board and River City Speedway ownership, uh, discussing this project, uh, Youth Assessment Center and Correctional Center expansion project. Purpose for those meetings really is to try our best to mitigate any negative impacts that this project will have on the races and on the Grand Forks County Fair and, uh, work through any concerns they may have. The the largest concerns and there's they are, uh, concerns that the Fair Board has, that the Raceway has uh, losing space, uh, disruption of their events and parking, lots of some parking options. When you look at, um, this rendering, you'll see up here lot number two. Uh, before we did the replot work, um, there was the assumption that lot two belonged to the county. And lot number two is gonna play a a bigger role in this project. Through the replodding process, it was discovered that the Fair Board owns lot number two. Um, some of the intended use for lot two was staging construction work, uh, excuse me, staging construction equipment offices. Um, also with lot number two, utilities are gonna have to be extended and they're gonna, uh, go through lot number two to get to the the Youth Assessment Center, which is in green, so that if you look at that rendering, you see green, that's the proposal. Um, so so obviously, uh, the the Fair Board does not wanna part with that lot understandably. In working with the Fair Board and trying to come up with with different ways to take care of those concerns that they have and have as little impact as possible, the following has been suggested, so if you look at the north road off of Highway eighty-one, um, the original, uh, process was this is gonna be fenced off, uh, to keep people out of the construction zone, that was not gonna work for the Speedway. Uh, so construction engineers is not gonna be doing that, obviously, they're gonna come up with a different, uh, system. So when this road, when this project is over, this road will be paved, right now it's gravel, and this will be a paved road. Uh, the fair and the raceway will have access to this road, they'll be able to use this road. Uh, there were some concerns that they wouldn't, so we addressed those. When you look at, um, the south road that comes off Highway eighty-one, that's called Old Pit Road, essentially a dirt trail. Um, the plan is to raise that up, use some crushed concrete or recycled concrete as a base and then put gravel on there and it'll be a much better usable road, which the Fair Board and the fair can use that, of course, it's this one. And then, um, I believe Chair Ross has been visiting Mr. West, and there could be some overflow parking in his in his yard during the project. And then hearing the concerns about parking, um, when this is all said and done, you look at the parking lot, the proposed parking lot, that's just kind of the south of the of the Youth Assessment Center. This is about eighty-five parking spaces, it's more, you would offer more spaces than what's there right now, you have to park in Jurassic Field. Um, uh, the 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 Fair Board and the raceway could utilize that during their events for parking, so it's much more organized parking, much more structured parking. Um, something else to to just be aware of, lot number seven, which is essentially where that park proposed parking lot is, that is leased land owned by the county. And lot seven is leased to the Fair Board, that's an expired lease right now. So there is no lease to the Fair Board to be using this, uh, so we wanna work on this to get this renewed, because that's where the pit entrance is, is on lot number seven. And so Ms. Longstead and I, uh, we've been, we had a few meetings to discuss how to present some options to the Fair Board. Right now, if you look at just about everything except fair two, all those parcel lot lots belong to the county. And we have different leases to the Fair Boards, so they can use those lots, uh, they're very piecemealed, they aren't concurrent with term expiration. Yeah, I did propose this to the Fair Board, they were amenable to it, let's take all these leases and put it into one document. And let's extend the existing leases and let's renew lot number seven, so that River City Speedway can continue to use it and Fair Board can continue to use it. Um, one document, also to include in this document, would be able to use that parking lot uh, for race events and in the county fair or the county. But when you look at lot number two, you'll notice our road comes off of Highway eighty-one and it goes through lot two and goes all the way through lot seven down to where the Fair Board offices. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna have to include an easement that's gonna first allow us to finish the road, so that there's access to the pits, and that comes all around. But if you also notice right here, we're extending the parking lot, which touches lot number two, which on a race night, they can, some folks will be able to park there if they choose. And then just a little bit of our Sally Port touches lot number two. So including an easement also, so that we can pull utilities underneath and access the, uh, Youth Assessment Center. I'm gonna defer Ms. Longstead in a bit, I know she has some questions for the board as well. But what, uh, staff's looking for tonight is, um, basically consensus from the commission to offer these options to the Fair Board, be included in the project, they are gonna add to the project cost, they are. But we wanna, we wanna make sure there's little impact as possible, provide them some of these options. Also, we wanna demonstrate that we are hearing their concerns and we're trying to find some some solutions to them. And now, in the original concept, this parking lot was like smaller, so we're adding on to it eighty-five spaces, so can answer any questions as well, um, but I think, I know Ms. Longstead, I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to you, I know you have a couple of things for the board.
Question first. We have lot seven handwritten in here, and there's lot seven where the building is right now, what's the difference?
Oh, that was, that's part of lot number seven, I'm highlighting where the pit entrance is on lot seven, so so.
No, I mean, the the present building, the, the tiny little number, there are lot seven on that.
Oh, no, referring to the handprint.
What, why are there two lots seven?
I can explain, be sure.
Okay. Um, thank you.
And part of my plan is just to kind of explain a little bit about the layout, so we can kind of all understand what is currently existing and the proposals that, um, have been discussed, so um, if you look on the screen, Debbie has pulled up, um, the plot that's been recorded with the county reporter for property, um, if you look at this property, um, what is outlined here, I'll kind of highlight with the mouse just so you get your bearings along the bottom here, if I can move the mouse in a straight line, that is Gateway Drive. At a diagonal here is North Washington, right where the hand is, is where the correctional center currently sits. On, the property outlined in this plat is all owned by Grand Forks County. Um, so if you look at all of this, all of here, oops, I'm going a little, I'm a little reckless with my model, sorry about that. All the way through here, um, and up back towards, uh, North Washington, all of that land is currently owned by Grand Forks County. This lot one over here is utilized by Mr. West's, uh, department, with the highway department. Um, this, uh, portion to the right-hand side of the map is lot seven. It's a strange shaped lot, so I'll outline that, it follows along North Washington, goes, uh, west this direction, then bumps out for this little rectangle here, that's the portion that um, Mr. Ford is referring to, that, uh, the county could offer to pave a parking lot to be jointly used by correctional center, uh, employees and personnel, as well as the Fair Board or Speedway folks. Um, lot seven goes from there south and goes all the way down to what is known as the go-kart track. The go-kart track is this rectangle right here, just south of the correctional center. So all of this, including where the correctional center is currently sitting, is considered lot seven. Right now, what is currently under lease with the Fair Board, um, is lot two, which is right here, lot three, which is right here, lot four, lot five, which is where the exhibits building currently sits, lot six. On, this portion of lot seven that includes the go-kart track, and then what is referred to in the lease as the westerly portion of lot seven, which would be this rectangle up here. This westerly portion of lot seven is the portion of the lease that is currently expired. So the Fair Board does not have this property under lease at this point in time, it's solely owned and utilized by the county. Um, obviously, there is an interest in in renewing that lease. And so I think, um, Mr. I, Mr. Wesley from Icon has kind of drafted up some plans, which is what Mr. Ford shared with you as far as, um, the the parking lot that could be paved. Um, then I would also bring your attention to this other recorded replat. Um, this is the only parcel that is currently owned by the Fair Board. So how this fits in, this is just north of the plat that I just showed you. So the correctional center is right here, this is lot seven, Mr. West's property is way over here. This lot one is currently the Valley Ho trailer court, just to get your bearings. Um, so it's just this segment here, um, that is west of, uh, North Washington, that is owned by the Fair Board. So if we go back to Fairgrounds replat, um, I have been tasked with drafting up a document that would, um, outline the agreement between the Fair Board and the county for the leased property and the Fair Board's property, if they were willing to, uh, agree to some type of easement in exchange for, um, the lease of the property. So, um, I just wanna be clear that I, and I don't believe necessarily others have uh, yet sat down with the Fair Board to fully explain this proposal. I think, um, it's important that, uh, the full board here is singing from the same sheet of music, so then when a proposal is made, um, we can confidently say this is the wishes of the Board of Commissioners. Um, so I can kind of go through what my understanding is of and what I've put down into an agreement thus far, and please feel free to stop me and ask any questions or or tell me my understanding is wrong, um, because now is the time I I'd like to know that, so that I get it corrected for the document, um, that I'm preparing. As Mr. Ford stated, um, it's my understanding that there's an interest in putting everything into one document that isn't normally what's done when there's a variety of pieces and leases and and things like that. Um, the property that's currently showing on the screen has a variety of leases for a variety of terms right now, I fully recognize that's confusing for all parties, so I think it is important that that be included in the document. Um, and so my proposal is to draft a document titled the Land Use Agreement. And that one document could include the leased properties. Um, specifically, it would be my recommendation that, um, lot two, lot three, lot four, lot five, lot six, and this south portion of lot seven, normally referred to as the go-kart track, be a leased property, um, for a period of ten years, um, and I I think it's important to note, the these aren't necessarily my opinions, I I've talked to a number of you, I've talked to Icon construction engineers and others, so I'm kind of piecing together the information I've gathered from everybody else. Um, I have had a legal description drafted for this portion of lot seven that is the go-kart track, because I think it's important that the Fair Board and the county are very clear as to what portion of that lot seven is under lease, so that there isn't any confusion in the future. Um, this westerly portion of lot seven, that is the parking lot area Mr. Ford, um, described. Um, it's my recommendation that we include in the agreement that this be a license agreement that's granted to the Fair Board, um, and the basis for that recommendation is it's my understanding that this would be a jointly used property, so a lease wouldn't necessarily be fitting for what how we wanna utilize it, um. In addition to that, um, let me just reference my notes. Um. Getting back to the leased portion, based on how it's been done in the past, uh, what I've incorporated into the agreement right now is that it would be leased for a dollar to the Fair Board, um, for for those portions, a license agreement. Um, unless you felt the need to have a price tag on there, that's, it's not required that there be consideration for a license agreement. Then when we look at the property owned by the Fair Board, as Mr. Ford explained, um, there is a need to, um, have a, there there currently is a roadway going through that pro- property. Um, my understanding is that the proposal is the county could pave that road to be jointly used by the Fair Board and, um, the county. It's also my understanding that roadway passes through the Fair Board's property and also passes through the county's property. Um, it's my recommendation that we include a easement, allowing the county to utilize that road, that would be a permanent easement because it wouldn't be there just for the period of the construction. Um, it's also my request or my recommendation that, uh, we include in our proposal to the Fair Board that a construction easement be included, um, for the full parcel of the Fair Board's property. Um, so that, uh, iconic construction engineers can have that to utilize, um, within their plans. Um, it's my understanding that they are willing and able to accommodate the fair and the Speedway's schedule, so that they aren't interfering with the events that that organization has going on, and and they would only use it outside of of those timeframes. Um. Thank you. There anything you guys can think of that I've missed? There anything you guys can think of that I've missed?
Utilities, we would need a.
Permanent easement.
To make connections with utilities and reside of Fair Board property.
And I would recommend that be a permanent easing.
Mr. Chair, something I've heard when visiting with Fair Board members, Speedway members, particularly the Fair Board members, there just isn't a lot of communication between the county and the Fair. And I think whether, why that is, doesn't matter. What matters moving forward is more communication. Bottom line with this is we need, we need commission direction to proceed. Need to come to some type of an agreement because the project, construction engineers and their subcontractors so far waiting. And if they wait any longer, they're gonna have to move on to other projects. And so my recommendation, I was gonna talk with Ms. Longstead about this as well, so she knows it's coming. Is she drafts the document and I think there should be a joint county, commission, Fair Board meeting. Yeah, so start it. Let's just start it. It's maybe quarterly, maybe they're by, they're twice a year. But in that first meeting, let's walk through the document. So I agree, the lease, extending leases, it's gotta be mutually beneficial. I think what Ms. Longstead proposes is paving that road, building up the other road, parking lot. I know, I know that Commissioner Russ didn't share Ross, they've also been looking at some other additional property as well to help with some of those parking concerns. But that would be my recommendation is, is we get a joint meeting sooner than later as well.
I agree.
I would also agree with Mr. Ford's recommendation. I think just having that open communication between the two entities would be valuable. With that said, I also would echo his comment that I think time is of the essence here. It's my understanding that construction engineers is standing out there with shovels, ready to roll. And so, you know, I would be happy to finalize this on paper if that is the wishes of the board, what I've just outlined. I would also be willing to sit down with the Fair Board and Mr. Ford or others if need be just to get this on their radar sooner rather than later so that when the boards do meet, it can be more productive. I don't want to just pop this on them at a meeting and expect them to make any decisions.
I think what needs to happen is the presentation we just had, we need to have with them and it needs to be here.
You can address the, the, the process. It's easier to work for a document.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I did send, oh, I apologize, her last name, gee, the Fair Coordinator. I did send, it's in your packets as well, that email, bullet pointing. Basically, here's what we want to offer up as a county. And bullet points for her to share with the Fair Board as well. And it's essentially a recap of what I just outlined. So, but yeah, I think we have that meeting and go through it.
Yeah, we have this map. We've talked, just what we talked about. And Ms. Longstead could be here also for that and she can explain the easements and all this other stuff.
The first wing commander I worked with when I started with the county, retired, now retired General Bullman. There's always a way to get to yes. Easy to say no.
I think I heard you say on the Fair Board property up in that corner. They use that, I believe, I remember from my tour the other day. When Carter was in town, they parked trailers there and they parked a bunch of equipment. Are you saying that that would be available to them for that week or so? No matter what. That would help them a lot.
Construction engineers isn't planning to use that for state.
Mr. Engen, members of the board, I can include that in the construction easement so that they have assurance that they would have that available for them during the time periods of their.
Okay, okay, so we just need to come up with a time.
I can, I'll work with Ms. Jean and Nelson.
Are we thinking of something next week or the following weekend?
Mark, is there a Fair Board meeting scheduled this week or next week? Or is it this week? I was gonna say it might be tomorrow.
Might need to give Ms. Longstead some time to.
Yeah.
You know, I'm fine meeting as quickly as the board would like to meet. I have most of it in writing. I just have a few things I need to finalize. So even if it was this week, I could add something. The twenty-fourth.
I won't be in town, but I don't hold things up on my account.
One on the twenty-fourth, five thirty.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. On the twenty-fourth, the next Fair Board meetings on the twenty-fourth. You talk with them quick and see if that's.
They could come up here and have it because they get so crowded in that.
Yeah.
I'd be available in the afternoon that day. But not, not before that.
In the evening, five thirty.
Evening.
Okay, very good. If nothing else allowed, I can move along to Chair, Airfield Equipment Building. Ms. Longstead and I met with Grant Sky yesterday. We should have this wrapped up very soon and have something for the commission by the next commission meeting. During the twenty-twenty-three EOL Development Grant, the county has, will receive ten million dollars of appropriated funds from the state. So thanks to our legislators for supporting the county and Grant Sky on that. And that ten million is just specifically to be used for the EOL's development infrastructure, Grant Sky, excuse me. Working with Grant Sky and North Dakota Department of Commerce on that language, Ms. Longstead and I have seen the draft. We've looked at it. We're waiting on final numbers for carryover and for Commerce to weigh in. Hopefully, it's not too ambitious. I'm a goal to have this to you by the first meeting in July when the state's fiscal calendar. Ms. Nelson, is the childcare proclamation, am I doing that or is that under?
Under committee report.
I'll leave that. Two other items that aren't on the agenda, doesn't require commission action, but informational. One concerns the additional maintenance technician position that was originally discussed when Mr. Grzeszewski unveiled his snow removal plan. As you all know, you'll need an additional maintenance technician position. It's been discussed at administrative services, no action taken. Also, we're gonna be adding footprint to the county facilities. So I'm gonna, I would like to work with Human Resources and Ms. Nelson to finalize those numbers and bring that back to the commission in June. If anything, you get approved so that the position can be included in the twenty-twenty-four budget. And at some point, we'll need to request a budget amendment because we'll need to get this position built before the snow season starts, which seems to get earlier every year. So that's just for information and if there's any questions, I can answer. But we'll work with that, work on that and bring it back. The last thing I have concerns the Sheriff's Office and the Emergency Operations Center. County leadership, city leadership, we met in twenty nineteen. The city was making us aware that police department is gonna need that full footprint in their building that the ELC, EM, the sheriff's office currently occupies. On March twenty-third, city and county officials met again to discuss that timeline, firm up that timeline, make sure everyone's on the same page. That March twenty-third meeting is the genesis for the emergency management move to the COV and POC, the Public Works. However, the Sheriff's Office, and you've been discussing this for a while, the Sheriff's Office, that timeline still holds true at end of twenty-twenty-six. I know later than early twenty-twenty-seven. Some options have been discussed with the city. Some commissioners may recall, we once discussed, there was once a discussion of building Sheriff's Office out by the Correctional Center. I can tell you, there's no land available for that. I don't see that as an option. Some other options that have been discussed with county staff, the sheriff and city leadership is purchase a building. Build the building. Lease. Then there was, there was one point in time when the commission was looking at a mixed-use building to build on that lot. That would have housed you and the pension, the state's attorney's office and the sheriff's office and connected to the county courthouse. But our derailment occurred. Something that was brought up in that March meeting was a joint law enforcement center that would house Grand Forks Police Department, Grand Forks County Sheriff's Office, public safety answering point and emergency management ELC. Which, that would be a fun project. It would need feasibility studies to make sure it would work financially, operationally. I've talked to Mr. Phelan. There is interest to participate if the county wants to go down that road. What I'm here respectfully to recommend the commission do, sooner than later, set up a special meeting to discuss this. Twenty-twenty-seven is gonna be here very quickly. And the city's been very accommodating. They've given us plenty of notice. We're moving forward with other needs, but as you all know, this one's always on my mind. But I think the commission needs to discuss what it wants to do, what are the options, funding, what everything looks like so that staff, the sheriff, we can start running this down and working on it and showing the city that we are trying our best to find some kind of solution. So I think the commission needs to start planning this soon because it's, even if a decision is made next month, it takes time, architects and engineers, bids, building, financing. And what I'm gonna do, do I think the sheriff is on? David here, if there's, if there's anything they want to add on this subject, I'll get out of the way for a second. But that's, that's, that's what I would recommend is setting up a meeting soon to discuss this and what we're gonna do.
Andy, you got any comments?
No, I agree with what Tom said and I appreciate him presenting that to the commission. But yeah, we should start looking forward and get a game plan.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. It's dirty. Nothing. Maybe tomorrow and we're in the news. About anything on that lot? Is negotiation.
All right. I gotta beat up a couple of people on this. Okay, all right, Commissioner Hagan.
I did have a Northeast Human Services Board meeting. They meet twice a year. Just reviewed what they've been doing. One of their goals is to have a medical detox center in each region. There's eight of them. But right now, they would have a hard time staffing it, like most facilities. Because of burnout, high turnover, long client wait lists. But they are looking at some mitigation efforts by going out to different career fairs and hosting internships, looking at tuition reimbursement and looking to work with the city to streamline the process for when clients come in to the facility. Other than that, it had the city or the mayor's city seat of address. Which was, which was good to see and hear some of the things that are coming to the community and things that we've done so far, so.
Commissioner Peach, do you have anything?
Yeah, the Airport Authority Board met the end of last month. They had a good meeting. The customs building is coming along as they continue to construct that. The airport runways, they're doing some work on the runways and continue to do that. Also, the, the Social Services Board, zone meeting met prior to this meeting. I wasn't able to participate due to some technical difficulties. And the Airport Authority Board meeting will be meeting again towards the end of this month. That's all I have.
Two different Zoom meetings with our consultants for going to the airbase. On Monday, we have coming up a joint meeting between the city, the county, the park board and school board to talk about tax incentives for a couple of projects that are coming forward and those will eventually come to the commission. And then I think we're all invited to the Grand Sky grand opening for the weather center on the twenty-third. And that'll be before our next mission meeting too, so it should be a good day.
Commissioner Hagan, do you want to talk about your proclamation?
So last week, I received an email from Ms. Tammy, I don't know what her last name is, asked if we could do a proclamation for May twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and then going forward for Provider Appreciation Day. So I don't know if you want me to read this whole thing or not. Anybody?
No, I don't.
But hopefully it'll get an approval to make me twelfth Provider Appreciation Day. I would appreciate that.
Okay, I got a motion to approve a second. I'll hold it in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion is carried. Thank you. I have nothing. Unfinished new business. Okay. Correspondence. I see there's a Phoenix Elementary School Safety Study Public Image. Do you want to know if I can do crosshair there?
Resume for that.
Okay, North Dakota Water Education Foundation. Okay. Mr. Hagan. All right.